Agenda item 5D. This is the draft environmental impact report for the draft transit corridor specific plan. Staff report.
Great. Thank you. So it's with excitement that I introduce to you tonight the transit corridor plan for the city of San Bruno. This is a plan that we have been working on for a number of years, a plan that included several community-wide workshops that hundreds of people combined attended, a process that included a steering committee made of planning commissioners, city council members, business owners, residents, and a number of other people stakeholders within the neighborhood. Mark will go more into just an overview of what the details of the plan are, but tonight's not so, isn't as much about the plan itself, even though obviously that's the backdrop. This is more about the environmental impact report. And anytime you have an environmental impact report, there's, and Mark will also go more into this, but there's a 45-day review period where we get comments from the public and then we respond to those comments and those go into what is called the final environmental impact report that'll go to the planning commission as well as the city council. During this 45-day period, it's not required, but it's, you know, most cities do it. You have, also have oral comment accepted in addition to the written comments, so that's the purpose of tonight's meeting, to give a brief overview of the transit corridor plan, the environmental impact report, and most importantly, take comment, excuse me, take comments from the public so those, to answers to those comments could be incorporated into the final environmental impact report. So what I suggest that we do is do a brief overview by Mark, then we turn it over to the public for their public comment, and then turn it back to the planning commission for some discussion. At the next planning commission meeting or at a future planning commission meeting, the different approvals that you will have to take a look at, of course, you'll have to certify the final environmental impact report, you'll have to amend the general plan in several areas for consistency with the transit corridor plan, you'll have to rezone the area, and the gentleman alluded to that the area has been rezoned, the area has not actually been rezoned yet, that this is the environment, you first have to do the environmental review and then you're able to do those other legislative acts after it, so there will be a lot more wider noticing as well as more detailed noticing in the future. And then, of course, approve the draft transit corridor plan itself. Because of some of the height limits proposed in this plan, eventually if the plan is approved in this form, it will have to go to a vote because of a 1977 ordinance that we have in San Bruno that requires all buildings that are planned to be over three stories in height to get approval by the general vote of the people, so that'll be something that we'll have to gear up for as a city later this year. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mark Sullivan, who's the project manager for the transit corridor plan.
Mark, before you begin, I would like for, I would like for you to start off with giving the public a direction as to where to go to find either online or physical records so they can review it at the leisure.
Okay. Well, there are printed copies of the plan are available to view at City Hall. You can either go to the planning counter or to the city clerk. They're available at both of their counters, and it's also available at the public library. So those three places, and then we, it's available online at the project website, which is planbruno.org. I think we tried to make it as simple as possible, so if you just type in www.planbruno.org, it will take you right to the, to the website, and the plan itself and the draft environmental impact report are available along with, along with other documents that are backup documents.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I think I'll start with just describing the plan itself. I'll try to be brief. You need to understand the plan in order to understand what the, what the environmental impacts are and what the environmental impact report says. So we'll start with the, with the vision. The vision was created by the community, in several community workshops, and also seven steering committee meetings, and feedback from, feedback and input from the public as well. And I'll just go through some of the main points of the vision for the plan. And one is make downtown an exciting destination for visitors, workers, and residents, and establish a regional destination centered on the new San Bruno Avenue Caltrain Station. Promote a more distinctive identity for San Bruno, building on its local character by encouraging exciting architecture and welcoming gateways. Encourage mixed-use development that will generate increased social and business activity and encourage residents and workers to use transit. Combine new development with housing and office on top to generate additional vitality and foot traffic. Promote an easy-to-use transportation network linking different modes, including pedestrians, bicycles, shuttles, buses, BART, Caltrain, as well as automobiles. Develop circulation and streetscape improvements that create an environment for pedestrians that is safe and friendly, including highly visible crosswalks, public plazas, landscaping, and traffic calming strategies. Encourage sustainable and green building methods and pedestrian-oriented green streets. So just to remind you where the transit corridors plan is, this is the subregional context, and as you can see, it's, it runs along El Camino Real, and I'll give, sort of focus in a little bit. El Camino Real on the left side of the screen, and then San Mateo Avenue, which is straight up and down, and San Bruno Avenue, which, which crosses both El Camino and San Mateo Avenue, and just north of the train, the junction of the train tracks and San Bruno Avenue is the, is the station area. The plan projects a build-out over 20 years, so it's, it's a long-range plan. It's not something that we expect to happen, you know, anytime soon. It's going to take a lot of work to make this happen. And the, the plan projects up to 1,610 housing units, about 150,000 square feet of retail uses, 988,000 square feet of office uses, and about 190 hotel rooms. And this growth represents an increase over the development under the current general plan, and the increase over is about 900 housing units more than the general plan projected, about 20,000 more retail square feet, about 660,000 more office square feet, and 190 hotel rooms. The, the development standards and design guidelines outlined in the plan are designed to govern private development actions in the plan area. These standards and guidelines will be used to evaluate private development projects. The development standards will be contained in zoning designations that are tailored to five-character areas to guide future development. The five areas you can see here are El Camino, which is in blue, the pink is downtown area, San Mateo Avenue, the green is San Bruno Avenue, the yellow is the train station area, and then Huntington Avenue, which extends up beyond 380, up to the BART station. Just as, as a note, the, the plan contains no residential density requirements, and the reason for that is basically to allow the market to determine the number and size of residential units. So basically, the, the plan sets the height, the bulk, and so forth, and then it will be up to the developer to propose the number of units that they, they would wish to, you know, to create in, in the building. It should also be noted that residential uses are not permitted in the 70 decibel airport noise contour, and I'll just show you where that is. It's right, right there. These areas are generally designated for mixed commercial and office uses. So the 70 decibel line is the line that runs basically through, through the middle, and the, and the yellow station area, which is north of that line, that is all within the 70 decibel zone, so that's why commercial office is proposed in that area and not, and not residential. So the, the plan has proposals for each of the character areas, and the first one I'll talk about is San Mateo Avenue. And the plan calls for preservation of San Mateo Avenue as San Bruno's main street and to maintain that character, while creating a more vibrant downtown with targeted enhancement of commercial uses and the addition of new housing and, and streetscape improvements. It proposes that the city consider reconfiguring the San Mateo Avenue and El Camino, El Camino Real intersection to allow the creation of a large new civic plaza or community open space to signify the, the entry into downtown. The northern end of downtown would be anchored with a redesigned Posey Park, which is part of the whole Caltrain project that's going on now, and higher-intensity mixed uses. Along El Camino Real, the plan emphasizes pedestrian-oriented streetscape improvements and promoting development of housing in order to transform the existing auto-oriented corridor into a more contemporary mixed residential and commercial corridor that takes advantage of the proximity to the new Caltrain Station and to neighborhood retail services available on San Mateo Avenue. It encourages ground-floor retail at significant intersections, and it focuses additional retail development at the southern end of El Camino Real near, near San Mateo Avenue to concentrate retail near the downtown, not to take retail away from the downtown. And along San Bruno Avenue, the plan proposes to, to transform San Bruno Avenue into a mixed-use corridor with higher-intensity uses that foster a pedestrian environment, encourages multimodal connections to the Caltrain Station, and creates a sense of community, community entry and identity. It encourages upgrades of existing storefronts and landscaping to improve the, the appearance of the street. It encourages diverse housing types, innovative roadway improvements, new bicycle lanes, buildings, streetscape improvements, and traffic circles and potential reduction of vehicle travel lanes. The reduced lane aspect is described as a longer-term option that will be studied after the, the grade separation project is completed. Huntington Avenue, that area is very similar to San Bruno Avenue, so I'm not really going to go into any detail on that, but there is one key development site across the street from the BART station at the, at the north end, which is identified as potentially suitable for a new hotel. The station area, the, in the station area, the plan calls for high-intensity transit-oriented development and encourages intensified mix-of-uses in this area, including office and retail uses that support and complement the new Caltrain Station. The design should create a highly desirable place to work as well as encourage Caltrain ridership with an attractive station surrounded by active uses and easy access. A two-acre vacant development site directly adjacent to the Caltrain Station platform is the focal point of a major mixed-use office retail center where the tallest buildings would, would be located. New gateway elements are proposed to frame and enhance the area around the elevated railway crossing, emphasizing the significance of the station and the entrance to downtown. And I'd just like to show you that, that is an illustration of a conceptual idea of what could happen at that site that's just north of the, the Caltrain Station. And this, this illustrates a site that's, that's now the vacant bank building on San Bruno Avenue in Huntington, and it's basically four stories of residential over commercial and parking. And this is the type of development that could happen in, you know, different locations along the corridor, along El Camino Real or, or San Bruno Avenue. And this is an example of a, of a potential development that could occur at the south end of downtown, and it's basically, it would involve reusing and redeveloping the area between San Mateo Avenue, El Camino Real, and Genovin Avenue. So it's, it's sort of taking that, it's a very, very ambitious idea, but it's taking that entire triangle and creating a large sort of public use type of project, and in this case, senior housing as well, and, and a, and an open space area. This illustrates the, the height limits that the plan is proposing, and I'd like to, to point out that the overwhelming majority of participants in the public outreach process at the steering committee and community workshops supported the building height increases in the plan, and really, it comes out of those meetings that we included these in, in the plan. And so the way it works is on, on El Camino Real, which is the darker brown, the, the height limit would be 70 feet, and the maximum numbers of stories would be five stories. Along San Bruno Avenue and Huntington, the maximum height would be 65 feet, and the maximum number of stories would be five, five stories. And in the downtown, the, the height would be increased from 50 to 55, so it would be a more, more modest increase, and it would allow four stories. And then at the station area, which is the darkest area in the center of the screen, that would allow the largest buildings, and the largest building would be closest to the rain, the train station, which would be 90 feet or seven stories. And there are a number of provisions within the guidelines to lessen the impact of taller buildings on single-family homes and residential neighborhoods. For example, there, there are provisions for step backs of upper stories, and also any property that's, that's adjacent to a residential property would, the, the building would have to be set back at least, at least 10 feet. And this, this illustration shows what a, what a step back looks like, and this is along a street, and as you can see, it's, it's stepping back. The, the third story is stepped back. So the, the impression from the street is that you're looking at a two-story building, and, but it's, it actually goes higher behind. And here's another example, which shows a, a building that's, that stepped back on, on two sides. On one side, it stepped back above the first floor, and the other side, it stepped back above the, above the third floor. The plan contains design guidelines for private development that are intended to provide guidance for both how buildings should be properly sited and oriented, and the overall quality of the architecture that's desired. And I'm just going to give you a couple of examples. There are numerous guidelines in the plan, but, for example, the design of new development should respect the scale form and development pattern of existing residential neighborhoods surrounding adjoining the transit corridors area. There are a number of provisions in there that seek to protect residential neighborhoods. Break up the mass of large-scale buildings with articulation and form architectural details and changes in materials and colors and other similar elements, and this includes changes in wall planes, upper-story building setbacks, and projecting or recessed elements. And this, this is aiming just at, you know, architecture, architectural quality and character, trying to create an interesting and varied environment in, with architecture. And then, of course, stepping down building heights along secondary frontage and rear buildings to reduce impact on adjacent properties. Another issue, which I think is something that we've sort of grappled with in many different instances over the years, is screen loading and waste storage areas from adjacent uses with vegetation, landscaping, and well-designed screening structures. So that's just a, a sampling of the types of guidelines that are included in, in the plan. The plan also includes guidelines for the public realm, and that includes key roadways, public open spaces, and really emphasizes green design features. The, the plan also includes a number of guidelines for roadway improvements, which I'm not going to go into right now, but I think what I would like to go into, would like to emphasize a little bit is the, are the parking requirements. And the plan does propose some important changes to, to parking, and for example, we just dealt with two issues in the, in the downtown regarding parking exceptions. And the proposal in this case, which came, again, came out of a sort of consensus opinion, is that downtown has about 300,000 square feet of commercial uses, and it has over 1,000 parking spaces, I believe it is, that are in, in public and private. And every time there's a, there's a change in use, if, if it's more intense use, then you have to go through a parking exception. The idea here would be to simply say that whatever the use is, as long as you don't expand the square footage, there would be no additional parking requirement, or, and you wouldn't have to go through the parking exception process, so it would essentially be, the existing buildings and square footage would be exempt from providing additional parking. However, if there were additional space or, you know, expansions, then the, the number would be three spaces per 1,000 square feet, which seems to be, in, in general practice and experience for, you know, downtown retail, that seems to be a, a good number that's used nationwide and, and works in downtowns. So that, that's one, that's one important change. The other one is regarding office uses, and most of the office use in this, in this situation will be near the Caltrain Station. So the, you, you can assume that a lot of people are going to commute via transit. I mean, it would make the most sense. We've, we've set the, the maximum at three spaces per 1,000 square feet of office, and the people who are experienced, developers who are experienced in commercial real estate who are on the steering committee, they kind of resisted at first because they, you know, more parking was, was wanted, but, but three seemed to be an all-right number, and they didn't want to be forced to be, to go lower. So the, the idea was to see what the performance is, to start with three, see what the performance is of the buildings in terms of the parking utilization, and then, you know, perhaps adjust it in the future, but to start with, with that three per thousand. And I think that, I think that gives you, you know, an overall idea of the, what the transit corridors plan does, the scale of, of the development that it's proposing, and the build-out and so forth. So now I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the, the draft EIR. As Aaron pointed out, the, the draft EIR was released on March 28th for a 45-day public review period. It was, it was transmitted to about 40 reviewing agencies, both state agencies and, and local agencies, and we're waiting to receive comments from Caltrans and the airport, CCAG, and, you know, any, any other agencies that have an interest in, in this plan. And I think, as Aaron also pointed out, the comments and the responses to comments and other corrections will be, will be presented in the final EIR to you at a future meeting. And the, the draft environmental impact report evaluates the potential adverse impacts of the proposed transit corridors plan in order to inform decision-makers and the general public. I mean, that's its main purpose. The draft EIR describes existing conditions within the transit corridors area. It analyzes potential environmental impacts, and it identifies mitigation measures to minimize significant impacts. The draft EIR also evaluates reasonable alternatives to the plan. I'd also like to point out that this is a program EIR, meaning that it examines potential wide-ranging effects resulting from implementation of the plan, and any future development project would be subject to individual site-specific environmental review. However, this could be minimal or minimized depending on how closely the project fits within, within the plan, which is, you know, which sort of speeds up the, the process and, and that makes it more attractive for developers to, to propose projects. The draft EIR identified 14 environmental topics that were considered to be potentially affected by the plan, and within those sort of topic areas, it looked at over 60 specific potential impact, potentially adverse environmental impacts. And it narrowed it down to 20 specific potentially significant impacts, which were analyzed in great detail. And the, the draft EIR concluded that nearly all of the potential impacts could be mitigated. However, it did, it did identify a total of six impacts that are, are significant and unavoidable. And it's not uncommon for a plan of this size to have some unavoidable impacts. I mean, it's almost unavoidable. But, for example, the, the Redwood City Downtown Plan resulted in 27 significant and unavoidable impacts, including 25 related to, to traffic, and that, that passed, and is, so far, it's been a successful plan. The significant and unavoidable impacts relate to traffic in four intersections, actually three intersections and one roadway segment, and then there's one impact related to noise associated with traffic, and one impact associated with historical buildings. And I'm, I'll go through each one just really quickly. The, the first intersection impact is the intersection of San Bruno Avenue and El Camino Real, and that intersection operates at a level D in, in sort of transportation speak, transportation engineer speak, and it deteriorates to a level F. The existing wait at, at that stoplight, and this is at the, just at the PM peak hour, the existing wait is 40 seconds at that stops, at that stop sign, stoplight. With the plan, the wait would be 140 seconds. So the increase is a minute and 40 seconds longer.
And through the chair, something to note when we take a look at these times, is that what Mark pointed out earlier is important. These times are if traffic patterns remain the same, or consistently grow the same, and if the plan reaches full build-out. So this isn't something that would happen overnight. If all the housing units were built, if all the office space was built, if all the retail was built, and the traffic pattern staying, but consistently the same, people still drove the same amount even though they're closer to the transit, then this could be the, you know, the worst-case scenario in terms of impact. So I think that's, you know, when you take a look at these, that's probably one of the most important things to say is, with anything, you know, it's, it's a gradual, it's gradual in terms of the improvements we'll see, as well as the impacts that you'd see.
Yeah. Thank you. The, the second intersection is the southbound 101 and San Bruno Avenue intersection during the afternoon peak hour, and that intersection, the, the level would go from a B to a D, and that's considered a significant impact. The existing wait is 18 seconds, and the total wait with, if full build-out of the plan and no other changes, would be 44 seconds. And it should also be pointed out at that, that there is, there is a mitigation measure which could reduce it to less than significant, and that mitigation measure would require restriping of San Bruno Avenue. However, since Caltrans controls San Bruno Avenue at that point, and, and we don't, we can't say that they're going to do that. I mean, they may well agree that that's a good idea, and that could be reduced to a less-than-significant impact. The third intersection is the El Camino Real westbound I-380 ramp intersection, and that again is at the afternoon peak hour, and that is at a level D, and it would, it would stay at a level D, but just slightly worse. And the, the existing wait is 40 seconds. And the existing wait is 40 seconds, and the total wait with full development and implementation of the plan would be 52 seconds. So it's a 12-second increase, but that's considered a significant impact under CEQA. The fourth traffic impact is actually, it's not an intersection, it's a segment, it's 380 between 280 and 101. And that intersection, I mean, that street segment, one portion of it already is at a Level F, and another portion of it is at a Level E. And both of those would go to an F. The F goes to a slightly worse F. And the way they measure traffic impacts on segments is capacity. So it's the number of cars on the road versus the capacity. And the capacity increases by about 10% is what the increase is due to the plan. The noise impact is a cumulative noise impact, and it's associated with traffic noise. And because the overall cumulative noise within the area is over 60 decibels on average, and that's because of trains, planes, and automobiles, any increase of over 3 decibels is considered a significant impact. So this would increase the noise level between 3 and 5 decibels. There's also a way to mitigate that impact, which is to use a special pavement that's, I guess, you know, they're advancing in pavement materials all the time, which was actually quieter. But we cannot guarantee that that road will be repaved with that pavement. But that could be the case. So that could also be mitigated. And then the last impact has to do with historic resources. And there are 11 buildings that are considered historic resources within the project area. And CEQA requires that all these buildings either remain in place and be preserved or be moved to another location. And since we can't guarantee that that's going to be the case, even though we've included all of the mitigation measures, the standard mitigation measures, which is a whole list of things that are recommended by the state, you know, the Historic Preservation Department.
Secretary of the Interior.
Secretary of the Interior, sorry. We have included all of those, and those would certainly be the, you know, what we would try to require in every case, but we can't guarantee it. So it had to be listed as a significant unavoidable impact. So those are the six impacts. Alternatives, the plan looked at a number of alternatives. One alternative that was kind of interesting, which was considered the environmentally superior alternative, was to, and this is happening in some communities, where we actually reduce the intersection level from an E to an F. So we simply, we set a lower number. And so then it's no longer a significant impact. And the reason that communities do that is because they're trying to encourage transit use, bicycle walking, and so forth, and discourage automobile use. And that concludes my presentation on the environmental impact report.
The one thing I want to touch on is what the California Environmental Quality Act says is, when you do have these significant impacts, what the planning commission and the city council has to find is that there's overriding considerations that override the potential impacts within the plan. So I'll go over what those are briefly, spend about 15 seconds on each. But these are some of the things that the city council will consider and the planning commission will consider in conjunction with this. The first and probably most important positive impact is revitalization of an older part of the city. Many of the standards and codes that we have now were put in place in the 40s, the 50s, the 60s, the 70s, when building practices were different, when business practices were different. And what you have is you have an aging infrastructure, both on the building side and underneath the ground, that just can't support modern businesses. That's why you see vacant buildings. That's why you see buildings that haven't been revitalized, because the codes and the standards just aren't keeping up with the times. So that's one thing that's a positive impact. The second, obviously, there are social and economic impacts. When you have a city that's greater from an economic standpoint, then there's going to be social. So new jobs and the general economy that will be built up from having revitalization. The third, of course, State of California mandates that each city zone for a certain amount of housing sites. We have a big hurdle. We have an airport that restricts the number of housing sites. So it's no longer a question for cities whether or not you build housing. The question is, where do you build that housing? I think the city council and the planning commission has a strong preservation objectives for our single-family neighborhoods, so those are off the table. So what we, since the airport area is off the table and the single-family neighborhood is off the table, you're very restricted where you can put housing. So this plan is focusing on the areas where we can put housing and building smart within those areas. The fourth objective is affordable housing within those areas. Many people who grow up in San Bruno are priced out of San Bruno. Many people who work in San Bruno are priced out of San Bruno. And that results in people in commuting long distances, overcrowding in houses. So one of the primary things that this plan likes to do is, in addition to providing general housing, is providing an affordable component. The fifth is a choice of what we coined convenience living. And what that just means is, you have a choice of where you want to live. If you want to live in single-family neighborhoods where your primary transportation option is driving, you continue to live in those areas. But if you want to live in an environment where you're able to walk to the store, walk downtown, walk to transit, this will give options for San Bruno-lit residents where they want to live. Enhanced pedestrian environment. El Camino Real, I always say it's like playing Frogger, trying to cross El Camino Real, because, you know, you're taking your life in your own hands a lot of times. Same with San Bruno Avenue. A lot of areas along Samatelle County is you have these wide roads that just aren't pedestrian-friendly, were designed with the automobile in mind. This would also design them not only for the automobile, but for bicycles and pedestrians as well. Access to transit. We have two mass transit stations. We have large employers within San Bruno. We have a number now with Google, YouTube, Walmart.com, Cisco, Stella, and Dodd, and all those major companies. You have a lot of people who take transit in, and this would build on that by being able to have greater access to that transit. Efficient parking. We have outdated parking codes. Many of them were also in the 50s and 60s where transportation and business models were different. These would update those, as Mark explained, for instance, in our downtown, so we don't put another hindrance in front of business owners. So every single time, they have to see a two-month, three-month process before they're actually up and going. Something called a sustainable community strategy. State of California is mandating that cities take a look at how they plan, and how they plan both from a land use standpoint and from a transportation standpoint, making sure those both align with the ultimate goal of reducing greenhouse gases, so that people either commute less or commute shorter distances. And finally, of course, tax revenue. When you have a base where you're not allowed to build within a certain area, over time you see a declining tax revenue, which results in less services for residents. When there's greater allowances to meet modern business practices and modern construction practices, a greater amount of services could be provided, both for new residents as well as existing residents. So that concludes our presentation. We could briefly answer any questions, or I can see there's also a number of people in the audience that would like to speak as well.
Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll go straight into public comment. Those who wish to speak on this matter can come to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Aaron, is that correct?
Correct.
And then there's a timer up there? Right, so, public comment is not open.
I'm just being at Crystal Hill, 664 Cypress. I've been in San Bruno for 40 years already. I just wanted to thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, for keeping us informed by email or by mail, and I really appreciate it. I'm not always able to come, but I know exactly what's going on, and I really, really like that, and I want to thank you very much. Okay, good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Carolyn Livinggood, Cheryl Drive. I just have a question, and I may be showing my naivety about this, but I was in on some of the community meetings, and there was discussion, a very positive discussion, about eventually the vision of our city, including potential library and also a history museum. Is that still in the picture?
I have a question. Do we want to collect all the questions and address them all?
Yeah, why don't we do that? I could answer it after we collect all the questions.
Hi, Thomas Wells, 871 Easton Avenue. A couple of questions and then a comment. Question would be, in the R1 housing surrounding these areas and actually surrounded by some of these areas, are there any plans to change the density requirements for building square footage versus lot size or any of those requirements? And the second question is that, I'm sorry, I'll just run into, go into the comments. Living along San Bruno Avenue, I, it has a lot of the same character as Samatelle Avenue as far as the scale of the businesses and the massing. And while it's not quite as dense as Samatelle Avenue, I understand why the scale and density requirements were increased for that area for building height and units being an open-ended issue. But one thing I just want to touch on is that some of these larger developments that go in, they can kind of be visually deadly. Case in point, down on El Camino Real towards Millbrae, there's these five-story buildings, a built-over podium with some commercial space on the ground floor, but man, are they tough to look at. I mean, yes, you take a small piece and look at it, and it's visually appealing, but then you just repeat that piece over and over and over again for a whole block, and it gets pretty deadly visually. I would say the same thing for the crossroads development, but really, context, it has no context. It's not surrounded by smaller buildings and everything. So that can be standalone, but it has some of the same character as well. But I would, before my time's up, I would just stress that in review of these structures to have, to require or encourage a lot of massing changes, material changes. I understand that in order to make these things viable, they need to be continuous and share amenities, but please watch out for that in the future. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Diane Pique, 908 Green Avenue. I have a few questions, and basically, I would like to know what TOD stands for? Who they report to? Who funds them? Are they, why do they need an office at the old San Bruno lumber site? Is that part of the plan? That was the way it looked?
I'll just answer that really quickly, because that's something I probably should have said. TOD is not actually a company or anything. It's a term called transit-oriented development. So it's development that's focused around a transit station rather than focused around like an automobile. So it's not any company in particular.
It's not?
Yeah.
An entity?
Yeah.
Okay. And is there parking for the train station?
Yes.
Where is it?
It would be underneath the building. So it would be a shared parking, like a structured parking.
So the train station will open without that parking facility in place?
No, no. No, so the, and actually, I should get back to answering these afterwards, but since I'm in the middle of talking. No, it'll start out as a parking lot. And if any development is proposed there in the future, then there'll be a combination.
Then that will change. Okay. And another question, because of my location, I'm concerned about the traffic on Euclid. And it looks like if we go five stories on Huntington, San Bruno Avenue, and El Camino, our little neighborhood is going to be landlocked. And we already have problems getting in and out of that neighborhood, especially with the Huntington Avenue, the little bump outs you've got there. If there's someone waiting at that stop sign, you can't pull in there. So I'm not in favor of bump outs with those narrow streets. And I don't know what a road diet is.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Again, Mr. Duffy from 782 Linden. My major concern is, if you look at the map, Linden is right here where you make the turn, and there's a great variance from El Camino. If you make a left onto San Bruno Avenue, you go up about two stories. And my concern is, where I am, right now, a two-story building is four stories from my patio. So that if you go another story or another story, you're actually adding two stories to any story that you add when you compare it to the residence next door. One thing I didn't see, and I have a question, is what about the parking for the residential area? And the reason I bring that up is, I'm concerned, especially there, the underground waterways, they suggested a motel in that area on San Bruno Avenue, and they said the water flow, there's a pump and a well close by. And so if you're planning on doing underground parking for any building in that area, the planning commission before said it really was not recommended. I'm also curious as to why maybe the transit corridor didn't end at White Way, which is on the same level as El Camino. It's the alley behind San Bruno Plaza.
Thank you for the comments. If there are no more public comments, then we'll close the session. And Aaron, do you want to address those questions?
Sure. Let me make sure that I got them all. So for Carolyn's comment about a history center and a library, I'm going to check on that. We don't, we talked about having a new library within the plan. There's nothing, I don't recall if there's anything specific about it, but it's something that we could propose to include, just in general terms. Obviously, that's ultimately going to be a city council decision, but I think what we do show is that a greater civic center area and presence along El Camino. Mr. Wells' comment, we do not have planned on any increases in the R1 areas. Those would stay R1 or R2, whatever they may be. There is a small section along the 800 and 900 block of Samatelle Avenue, across the street from where the new train station parking lot will be, to where the backsides, because you have, on Samatelle Avenue, you have those auto shops, and then you have some homes right behind them. Those would also be included within the area. So that would be the only area where you would see the change in specific plan designation. And that's only to get the correct lot depths to propose any future development. But other than that, all single-family residential stays the same, and all duplex zoning stays the same. I also agree that these bigger buildings could be visually deadly. We've done a couple of things within the plan to help that. I think the two most important things is really stressing the form and the architecture of the building over the actual density requirements in the building. I think that's important. We also have the step-back requirements that are shown within the plan. Those are also important. But one thing I think that we did is have something where you're allowed to take the average of the step-back, so that you don't have a building that goes up and then step-back 15 feet, you know, and it has that kind of uniform look. We would allow the developer, and we'd encourage the developer, to vary that step-back along the way, so that it averages 15 feet. That way, you don't get that uniform look, and you are allowed to have different architectural features and different materials to help break up the mass. But what I also think is going to be important is, we could put all the, everything, you know, all these guidelines within the plan, but then also during each plan, each project will have to go through architectural review. So it's going to be critical that the staff, the public, as well as the planning commission and architectural review committee, take a look at these buildings and make sure that they meet both the letter of the plan as well as the spirit of the plan when they're Traffic, the traffic on Euclid, we could take a look at the plan and see what the potential impact, but... impact, but I agree, you know, bulb-outs and things like that don't necessarily make sense in all the different places, because they can cause additional traffic, especially, let's say, when you have a bulb-out that perhaps can block a right-hand turn lane or something along those lines. So that's something that we're all going to have to look at carefully when we're implementing the actual infrastructure portion of the plan. Mr. Duffy's comments around the grade variance, the plan itself does, I'll have to double-check, but we did discuss during the time to really pay attention to grade changes to make sure that they don't have a significant impact on the neighborhood behind. And right now, as current ordinance goes, you're allowed, even in that zone, right next to that residential area, you're allowed to have a three-story building, you know, with no step-back. This actually has step-back requirements, and we would obviously during the architectural review phase, pay more attention when there's grade differences that put the residential area below the commercial area. And the reason that we included the area west of White Way is because it's all a commercial area right now, and it frankly makes sense from a development standpoint to get lots with greater depth, so that you, because on El Camino Real, there's a lot of different hurdles that we have to go over, and lot depth is one of them, especially when, as he pointed out, there's not a lot of suitable area for underground parking. So what you're probably going to see is two different types of parking arrangements. You're going to see podium-level parking, where they go partially underground and then put the housing on top of it. That's pretty popular, and so it's less expensive than going underground, especially when you have water table problems. And the second thing is a parking wrap design, and that's similar to what we have in the crossing, where there's actually a donut of parking in the middle of an apartment building, where people go up and they park on their own floor, and then are able to go to their apartments from their own floor. And that's cheaper to build than going underground, so that's probably, and also it goes up quicker, and you can't see the parking, which is nice, because you don't see this big parking garage. And it's also very convenient for the people that live in there. And I think someone said, are there residential parking requirements? Yes, there are residential parking requirements. Basically, they're all spelled out within the plan. Since it's closer to transit, obviously, it's less parking requirements than you would have in a single-family home, similar to what we're requiring at the crossing right now. Talking to the Archstone manager at the crossing, they have, the parking requirements there have worked really well. It's basically one per bedroom, and those have worked well, have an impacted demand for the residential units. And people generally who live in these areas either work one or two places. They work in an area where they can walk the Caltrain or walk the BART and are able to share a car, if they have a one-bedroom unit with two people living in, or they work in the Bay Hill area and are able to walk there as well. So there will be parking for those who need it, but there will be reduced parking overall.
Thank you, Aaron. What's the course of action from here?
So what we will do is, we're collecting all the comments now, so I encourage everyone who spoke tonight, we'll respond to their comments. If they ever have any questions, they can call Mark or call me directly, and we can sit down with them, go over any aspects of the plan. You know, in some circumstances, obviously, we can incorporate those ideas into the plan. So from here, we're taking in public comments, taking in agency comments, and then we'll present the complete package to you for your recommendation for approval.
So is the planning commission continuing this matter?
Well, at this point, you would just close public hearing. The only real goal of tonight was to introduce you to the plan, close public hearing for the purposes of the EIR comment period. The public will of course be able to comment at all, we're going to have a series of transit corridor plan meetings between the planning commission and the city council, so they'll be able to comment on, generally, on the plan. But tonight closes the public comment for oral comment related to the transit corridor plan.
Commissioner Vesely?
If it's appropriate, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Listening to what everyone had to say, and then looking at the map, and considering that this district is to promote transit rather than having people drive into it and park, I think it would be to the benefit of the community to have a parking, a residential parking permit for the existing single-family homes east of the El Camino, to preserve that single-family residential neighborhood feel. And I think we should approach that earlier than later. I would rather see us do that first and then not have to have the community come back and say, hey, this is, you know, people are driving in to go to the train station and parking in front of my house. So I think preemptively, we should think about that before, sooner than later.
That's great. There actually is a policy related to that within the plan, to investigate some type of, and we have had residential parking permits for areas near the BART station and the Caltrain station, so it's not something that's unprecedented.
Very good. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner?
One thing I've noticed with the Caltrain work now that's underway, it's produced an extraordinary amount of horrible pavement that nobody seems to care about, and a tremendous amount of traffic that skirts Huntington and San Bruno Avenue by going through the single-family streets. And I haven't, I've done that myself, guilty as charged, whoever made that comment. But I never see, there's no signs that say, no through traffic, for example. If such a sign were there, then it would be an enforceable instance, but as of now, it isn't. So on balance, I see that those residential streets in that area of development are likely to get a tremendous amount of traffic. Not only amount of traffic, but weight of traffic, so the pavement is going to be worse than ever. So you might want to try to evaluate what that means. The, since the transit, one of the main, well, two of the main transits go right up Huntington, both BART and Caltrain. I would have expected to see a lot more transit-oriented development right along that line, whereas there's actually a huge amount on El Camino. And that development on El Camino will attract more traffic to El Camino, which will, in the report, it was said the traffic, the road performance will go from D to F, and it's 40 seconds now. I don't think it's 40 seconds now. There's frequent times I try to go up El Camino, pass San Bruno Avenue, takes the third light before I can get through. So 40 seconds in what universe? I don't know. You know, I, it, let me ask a question, besides being annoying. Was there a traffic study for this?
Yes, I believe Farr and Pierce.
Oh, Farr and Pierce.
Did a traffic study. And you're right, I mean, sometimes it's going to be greater than 40 seconds. I think its PM peak average is 40 seconds, based on their calculus.
Well, there's some peaks that are way worse than that. And my take on that is that the human, the impact on the human beings is going to be much worse than the report suggests. And lastly, you may have had steering committee people and people who come to planning meetings who think these height limits are great. I have a funny feeling that people who come to planning meetings and steering committee meetings may not be representative of the same thinking being widely distributed in the general public. The general public, I suspect, is like anyone. They know where the traffic is tough already and what some of the impacts are. And my guess is they like ordinance 1284, the three-story ordinance. So if you think you're going to sell some five, six, seven-story buildings, you might think what the alternatives are. I would think if you had a tremendous amount of three-story buildings go in, in that general transit area, you would have a tremendous amount of addition to housing with that amount of stories. And not to say I think this is a bad EIR, I think it's a great EIR. It covers the potential increases in density and addresses what the impacts will be. That's what it's for. But I think as a practical matter, it may be tough for the public to take, the public who lives here, I mean. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner?
I certainly support your comments, Commissioner Peterson. One of the things in the traffic, it probably would be useful to hear also sort of the timeframe, the time limits, so public gets a sense of what this looks like from a time factor, it doesn't necessarily be addressed to night, but I think that's a useful piece where people get a sense of that. One of my observations have been, when you're heading north, heading towards San Bruno Avenue from Millbrae on Huntington, what's been useful is the different, adding the two, going over the tracks, and having a couple of ways to navigate around it. When you're heading south from the Police Plaza, Town Faran area, you don't have as much opportunity. What you're doing is basically, you have two streets, Euclid and there's one right before the shopping center, and you really don't have options. So if you don't make that decision soon enough, you're at that San Bruno Avenue, you're in it. And so if you're not turning left and you're not turning right, you're trying to go straight, you're trying to navigate. And what I'm noticing, people are trying to figure out, okay, how can I get out of this grid? What can I do? And sometimes, what I've observed is actually, people think that they're actually double-parked, and they try to go around it, and there isn't traffic navigation taking place in those areas. So if it's during work hours in eight to five, there's oftentimes navigation taking place. If it happens to be shortly around five or thereafter, people are still thinking that there's someone there, and, I mean, they really do try to go around ways that are not safe. So I don't know if there's anything to take a look at, and based upon this is not a short-term project, is to look at, okay, what can happen, and what are those, what are those options and what are the issues during those periods of time, and what options can happen during that short range. So I do travel it every single day, several times a day, actually, at different peak times, different times, you know, non-peak and peak times. And so it's interesting to sort of watch and think of it from a planning commission point of view, and from, you know, what can I provide as feedback and information? And being proactive about offering my observations and then bringing it to you for potential solutions and working with the appropriate resources to be able to come, so the public can actually be supported and for safety overall. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Vesely?
Yeah, through the chair. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mark for the fine work you and staff have done on this report. You know, it's a huge undertaking, and it's taken a long time, so this does, this report isn't done in a day. This represents a lot of hard work, so thank you very much. Job well done.
I agree.
Through the chair. Sorry. You know, I just have to take exception to a couple of comments that Commissioner Peterson made. It's nothing personal, but as, you know, as this whole thing has progressed, there was a lot of, a lot of work that was put in by, excuse me, by a lot of people in the community. And I just, I'm just kind of uncomfortable with putting it out there that we're going to have a hard time, or that the city council will have a hard time selling it to the public or whatever about the height limitations and all that, because there was a specific type of person who may have been on the steering committee or in the meetings or whatever. I think generally, it was attended by a, across, whatever, you know, I mean, across the board, people from the community. And from what I heard when I attended those meetings, and I was fortunate enough to actually sit on the steering committee, was, yeah, we want to, you know, we need to move to the future, we need to look to the future, and if that is, you know, changing the height requirements, then so be it. So I just don't want to, I just kind of felt uncomfortable, like putting the kibosh or hearing a kibosh, put on something that realistically, the community, from what I, from what I saw firsthand, was in favor of. Other than that, Perry, as usual, you know, you're quite eloquent, and, you know, your points are well-taken, but on that one there, I do have to just kind of disagree with you.
Thank you.
Through the chair. One comment related to that is, we did, you know, we did get comments from people that wanted to keep the height limit the same, or did, we did get comments from people who thought that, you know, perhaps we shouldn't go over three stories or five stories. And when we spoke to those people, we ended up incorporating a lot of their comments within the plan. So things like the step-backs, you know, were one thing. We heard people say that, you know, I, you know, I mean, we don't want to see a five-story building because we feel that it will loom over the residential neighborhood next door to us. So we said, you know, that's, that could be the case, so why don't we step that building in so that you won't have the loom, so you won't have looming. And related to the point of three-story buildings, buildings don't get built at three stories. That's why we've had the three-story height limit for 40 years now, and nothing's been built. The construction costs related to a three-story building just don't pencil out, and that's why you don't see construction at three stories. You really need to get to that fourth-story limit to really make it pencil. And then in some cases, four stories above a podium structure, so that creates five stories so that you could, so that you could actually have parking below. And that's something that we made sure we did within this. We didn't want to create a planning document that sits on the shelf and is unrealistic from an implementation standpoint. So we met with builders, we met with people in the construction industry, we over, we looked at performas to say, if we do adopt these policies, will it actually result in implementation? I mean, that was the goal. So, yeah, I mean, there are people that, you know, support ordinance 1284 and have supported it for a number of years. There's some people that support provisions of it, and there's other people that like to see it augmented in certain ways. And what we had was a consensus of people within these workshops that said, you know, ordinance 1284 really made sense for the time, 1977, that made sense. But at this point in time, things have been modernized, things have progressed to the point where we have to take a smart look at these areas. And one thing that I really like about ordinance 1284, it causes us to focus on certain areas and get voter approval for it, rather than just taking something and painting it all over the city. So at the crossing, we're able to focus on that, go to the community, go to say, what would you like to see there, and then take it before the voters, and actually implement a plan, and that was implemented per the plan. This, now we're taking a look, a new train station is moving down here. Community, you know, given ordinance 1284, how would you like to see us grow, given the limitations that we have? And this is the consensus that we had coming out of these workshops. And now we have the public review process, and now we get to incorporate comments that we hear during the public review process, and it results in a final plan, and certain provisions of those plans then have to go to the voters. So there's a lot of other steps, but there has been a lot of community input taken and incorporated into this, into this plan.
Are there any more comments by planning commissioners? If none, then the public comment for this session, the planning commission meeting has been closed, and this item is over.